I'd like to call and move into order. And if we could please remember Steve Drew and his family. Mr. Drew passed away last week, and he was one of our past Board of Ed members. So if you could please remember him and his family. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, its standers, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, The Herald News, The Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Town Library, and all district schools. Role call for Ms. Francisco?
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Garino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Orshinsky.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Bandite.
Here.
Okay, Dr. Ananome. Public hearing.
Great to step out, but we'll start. So good evening, everybody, the board members, members of the West Milford community. Tonight is our annual public hearing on the budget. This is for our school budget for next school year. This is the last step of our budget process, which began in earnest probably around November this year. Thank you once again to our Board of Education, not just the members of our Operations and Finance Committee, but the entire board. Our volunteer board puts in loads of minutes, loads of hours, every week, every month, all year round, helping out with the budget. And the decisions we make all year have led us to this moment. So it's said that budgets are a statement of priorities. So it's easy to say, we support this, this, and this. But if you don't budget money for it, it's not that, you're not really supporting it. You're just saying you're supporting it. So I'm proud to work with this board because they have priorities, and they fund those priorities. Small class sizes, neighborhood schools, fine arts, co-curricular activities, our buildings and grounds, these are all priorities that we have, and these are things that we are funding. So it seems to be a good process right now. Our budget right now has changed a little bit since our preliminary budget, which would have been in March. The total budget is going to decrease by just under 1%. It's 0.99%. Our general front decreases by 1% on the button. Our admin costs are lower than a regional limit. So the northern part of New Jersey, the limit is 2419 per pupil. Our limit is 2072 per pupil. If you multiply that difference by about 3,000 students, you're going to find we have about $1 million extra that's not spent on administrative overhead, but that's spent in the classroom, in our buildings and grounds, on our facilities, on our curriculum, on our technology. So this budget, as well as all the budgets that preceded it, are putting money in areas where they're going to directly help children. This is what we're going to do. Ms. Francisco, I allude to the fact that this budget changed a little bit from March. Can you just amplify that a little bit?
Yes, I've discussed with the board that since March 9th, when we approved the preliminary budget, we were, we approved the security vestibule project for the high school and Mackbin School. So in order to get that project done, we have to incorporate that capital project into the 2122 budget. And what we will do is, the current budget will include a deposit into capital reserve so that we can take the money that we know we were going to set aside in this year's budget and include it in next year's budget so that we can cover that cost. So we will be covering that with a deposit to capital reserve. And it's important that I verbalize that and let everybody know why we had to change the budget. Everything else is intact. And if you have any questions, we can discuss it a little bit further later on.
And we do have some, we do allude to some of those changes later on in the presentation. When we get to the revenues, the expenditures, we talk about the security vestibules, et cetera. So it's all in here. Curriculum highlights, Mr. Novak, can you jump in here?
Yep, this is very similar to what I presented at our preliminary budget hearing last month. We're just going to go over a few of these points again. In our area of English and Language Arts, we've done a lot of work in the last, we called it our five-year plan. We've completed a number of projects. So we are at a, we are at a point where we are in review for those things that we haven't implemented. You know, so often this work is really never finished. It's just a matter of what is our next goal? Assessing how we've done for the things that we have in place and how do we improve upon those things that we've been working on. So a number of those items are on here. Our balanced literacy program review, that was, that's referring to our K through 8 process over the last five years, where we brought in a literacy consultant to work with our staff and fine-tune some of our components of our reading and reading and writing program. This past year, which is the fifth year of that plan, has been a little bit different, obviously. So we are in the process of reviewing the things that we intended to accomplish, you know, before we transitioned to the type of environment we were working in now. Before the pandemic, we had transitioned from a very instructional sort of model, where our teachers were receiving, you know, meeting with our consultant and talking about best practice and planning units of study together, to a program where it was an in-class coaching model, where our teachers were communicating directly with our trainer and then having that person in the classroom with them and helping to work out those lessons on the fly. So we're, we're in the process of reviewing that and planning for next year to try and get back to some of those, some of the end pieces of that five-year plan that we missed on this year. Other piece we're talking about is our, we implemented a new program in grade 3 through 5, the seven-year Word Study Program, which has been, you know, well-received in our elementary schools. We are taking a look at, you know, our implementation, or looking at, you know, one of the things that's also coming in this environment is some transition of different staff members in different positions and different grade levels. We've had a number of retirements. So we have to take a look at people who are now going into these classrooms in grade 3 through 5, who haven't been trained in the process that we've had to this point. We're also with the addition of 6th grade to the middle school, taking a look at our 6, 7, 8 continuum and making sure that we're on track with everything we need to do there. Math, we have some, in my opinion, an exciting development with developing a relationship with Conquer Math, where we're going to begin some, a training process for our, for our staff with a well-respected math consultant in the northern New Jersey area. So that is part of the budget that we're talking about tonight, as well as the continuation of some of these things that we've had in the past. So, you know, we've highlighted Star Math and a newer program, ST Math, that we've talked a lot about in here. But this is also referring to, you know, things like Linkit that we've talked about. So although there's, Linkit has been a, it's not necessarily a new component of the school budget. It's something that this budget continues to support. And I believe I've spoken a number of times about how fortunate we were to have had Linkit this year and how it helped us through everything from, you know, reporting data for the spring assessment upload to having virtual tools for our teachers to use that they had already been, already been trained on. Next slide. Another component, which is, which is another exciting new development, is the implementation of a K through 5 science program that aligns us with the, which we were, we've been working towards complete alignment with the New Jersey student learning standards for science over the last few years. And we believe that this program is sort of the, you know, final piece of that puzzle that puts a very user-friendly resource into our teachers' hands and provides our students across the district with a common experience where they really get to enjoy and love science. Very different than a traditional science textbook. This isn't about, you know, science vocabulary. I like to quote our science supervisor, who likes to say, "Science is a verb." This is, this is a program that enhances the hand-on and discovery components of science and really allows our educators to do the best that they can with our, with our students in grades K through 5. In social studies, and I'm going to skip and put two together, social studies, music, art, and family consumer sciences, there are a number of major changes to the standards in those, in those content areas. So we're going to, our budget supports the, you know, the summer work of getting our educators and our professionals together to take a look at our curriculum, make some changes, and potentially, you know, recommend for some new materials that you might see in next year's, next year's school budget. And also, as always, you know, West Milford boasts a robust industrial arts program. And for, for us to do that, we have to keep those, you know, shops and equipment up to date. Also, something that's not on the slide is, you know, I referred earlier to Linkit. Our current budget is the continuation of some of the things that we've put in place in the past. Class Link, which I know has been widely successful in terms of single, single sign-on for our families, especially when we switched to a quick, you know, overnight, we suddenly were a one-to-one district. If we, and, you know, the implementation of Class Link really allowed us to enhance that. Linkin, as I link it, a number of the programs that we implemented for our staff with, with the pandemic, Paradeck, Screencastify, Kami, those are all a number of things that this budget supports, the continuation of for, you know, for the, you know, classroom, classroom tools for our teachers to use.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. So our budget timeline, as you can tell here, this is the final step here of the public hearing on the budget. The board approved tonight, and our fiscal year will begin on July 1st. So our budget basics, we have half of it is in revenues, half is in expenses. And our problem is that our revenues are declining, but our expenses are rising. Salaries, benefits, utilities, transportation costs, the cost of textbooks, every little thing we have goes up in price every year, but our revenues do not. So our tax levy is capped by the state at 2%. Our state aid this year declined dramatically, over $2.4 million cut that we are absorbing year over year. And our federal aid could still be declining, although this does not factor in the one-time-only CARES funding, S of 2 funding. So our state aid reductions, this is what the bill S2 was promised to us a couple of years ago. In 2018, it was announced, and this was going to be our cumulative cuts. And this has been the revised number. So the actual has been close to $6 million already. Over four years, there are still three budget years left. 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. At this slope, it'll probably take us off the chart here. We'll have to redo the Y-axis here just to keep up with it. So I can do the cumulative cuts year over year for four years, close to $6 million. State aid as a percentage of our budget, it used to be a little bit over 25% of our budget. Roughly one quarter of our school budget was funded by the state in 2008, '09. This year, it's going to be about 12%. So it's more than cut in half. And we are projecting it to settle in at about 7, 7.5, 8% in three years. So this is actual, and this is projected down here. So what does this do? It puts pressure on the local taxes because if the state gives you less every year and your expenses go up, you have pressure on local taxes. The cap is on the local tax levy, not the overall budget. So it's not 2% of the full budget, it's 2% of the tax levy. Approximately 80% of our revenues are in local tax dollars. So on this budget, we increased the tax levy by 2%. But that's only an increase in revenues of about 1.6%. Because it's not 2% of 100%, it's 2% of 80%. Local tax levy, as this board and the boards that have preceded it have done a great job managing the local tax increase year over year. The 10-year increase is 1.5%. That's spread out over 10 years as an average, which is considerably lower than just about any other district that I've ever seen. Our budget in the long term, this is an eight-year trend. Our budget is unchanged over the last eight years. It's actually up 6, 100ths of 1% in eight years. And if you think about what did everything cost back here, we know costs have gone up in that time period, but the budget has remained almost completely flat. So the 2122 budget, this shows you here, is a 2% increase in the tax levy. But because of the dramatic reduction in state aid, the overall budget goes down by just under $3.25 million, which is a 1% reduction year over year. These are our revenues. You can see the big drop here, and then there's some smaller drops in some other areas as well. The restricted miscellaneous revenues has to do with the one-time building of a turf field last year, the township chair. Let's move over to our budgets. Because our revenues are down...
Sit to the right, please, and show that last slide.
Yep, this is our revenues from 2021 to 2122. And our expenses are down in almost every category because the bottom numbers are the balance. Tax levy impact on the median assessed home. The home has not changed in value. It's $242,300. The average tax increase on net home is $126, just over $10.51 per month. Capital projects, we had these into the preliminary budget. We did add the security vestibules at Mackbin and West Milford High School, as well as some other projects that we have going in. Telephone system, some expenses abatement, paving, power replacements at the high school and Marshall Hill. Proposed cuts to get our spending down to where it needs to be. And we have cut in all different categories across the district, mostly either by retirement or by attrition. There are two RIPS, which are on your budget now, which we'll make tonight. And what does the future look like? Is that we have three more years of government at times state aid. We don't know what it'll look like. We believe federal aid will decline as well. And we know our expenses will go up, salaries, benefits, building maintenance, et cetera. This means some pressure on the local taxes. And it cripples our ability to fund our capital reserve accounts, our maintenance reserve accounts, some of those rainy day funds that we need when we have a leaky roof or a boiler break or something happen in the district. Anybody in the board have any questions?
I do. I know this is a very, very austere budget. And I know the people work, I know the administration's worked very hard on it. But I just, I just have a hard time justifying this budget to the community for the following reasons. One, the $25,000 merit pay is still in there. And it, there's no reason, since the cap has been lifted. The second is our SAT scores. I mean, I hear Mr. Novak, you know, applauding everything that's been done, but we're 173 out of 307 schools. I just, I don't know. I don't know, I'm worried. I'm worried that we're not going in the right direction.
So we can definitely get down in the next...
You don't need a presentation. I, you know, I just want answers as to why our scores are low. It has nothing to do with a math supervisor because the kids that took this in 2019, 2020 did have a math supervisor. Um, you know, I just, I mean, how do you say to a taxpayer, "I'm going to raise your taxes $10.51 a month"? But our kids aren't, our kids aren't being challenged. Our kids aren't doing as well as they should, you know.
Yeah, so just to, not going to give you an answer, but just an explanation. So there was an article online today with the rank of the high schools by SAT scores. Just came back today, I really haven't had a chance to...
I got it last week.
Work through it. But we could add that to our education committee agenda for May to discuss it. Where we are, you know, where we came from, where we are, and where we're going. And hopefully, I know it doesn't help us right now, but we can, we can discuss that committee for sure between now and May.
But I know, I know the community is going to have questions, that's...
I think I hear Ray or Kate had their hands up.
I was just trying to piggyback off what Terry's saying. We offer PSATs to what grades?
All grades.
At PSATs?
Yeah, all of them, your stable.
Not sophomores?
Sophomores.
Sophomores and juniors take PSAT.
Yes.
During school time?
Yes.
And that's in this budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So that should be practice, and I don't know.
That, that makes me happy. I was worried that you were going to say just juniors. I wanted to hear sophomores and juniors.
Well, if you call us, there was quite a bit of debate in this room about us using the PSAT. So we wanted to support the PSAT. We had supported the PSAT in grades nine through 11. And then we were, you know, there was discussion about overtesting, and then we backed off on that. The purpose of PSAT was to help try to get students more ready and more accustomed for SAT. But you can't have it both ways. You can't back off the, you know, preparation for SAT.
There should be preparation, but, I mean, and I'm glad that the PSAT is in, in the budget, but I just, I'm sorry about why it's not supporting the scores.
So Terry, you mentioned the $25,000. What did, were you, what's that piece that you're talking about?
That's the merit pay for the superintendent. Originally, when the state capped superintendent salaries at 2%, they allowed merit goals. And our district has five goals. And they're given $5,000 per goal. So I'm just thinking $25,000 could be put in classroom.
Courtney?
I'm really glad to hear that the Knowing Science Program aligns with the NJSLS. I think I did that right. But the social studies, what are we going to do for social studies? Is there a curriculum revision happening for the new...
That's, that's part of the, that's going to be part of our review when we look at, when we update for the standards.
That's going to be the summer that you're going to be working on that?
Yeah, so we don't know if we need a new program yet. Our new, our current program isn't that, isn't that outdated. I want to say that outdated, isn't outdated. But we have to see if it addresses some of the new standards and some of those things that we need to do. So we don't know if we need to replace the entire program or find some supplementary materials to address some of the new standards that are in there.
May I ask a request? Because this came up last time when you put into the agenda the science program that was budgeted for thousands, that if teachers can just have a look at some of the programs that you're, you're going to be offering. Like if it's like a nice strong geography, if the teachers can have some hands-on experience with it, with their class, that would be awesome.
Like a pilot, you're saying?
No, not necessarily like a pilot, just seeing it. And, you know, because I mean, these programs, these, these companies want us to buy it, right? So they'll send you samples. And I would love to know that a bunch of teachers are looking at different textbooks and different programs in our district to know what they would like best, not just the administration deciding what they think is best. That's my request.
When you're looking at it over the summer, is there, I think along on the back of what Courtney's saying, is it's a team of teachers that are looking at these programs?
Well, we're not looking at programs this summer. We're looking at, we're looking at the standards this summer.
Okay. So we're still staying with the program or with until...
Right.
Okay.
So if we're going to do a new program, it would have to be something that's budgeted a year in advance. So like, you know, you would gain this presentation one year from today with a follow-up.
And then I just had one more question. You said that our budget will support programs like CAREDAC and Kami. Are we going to stick with Class Link next year as well?
We are going to, yeah, continue with Class Link.
Good to meet you.
Then do you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. Can you clarify, Mr. Novak, the "we" in the sentence that we are going to be looking at the social studies program? Is that at an administrative level or is that at a committee level?
Well, we pay, that's what I said, is including the budget is the, there is a amount of money budgeted for our committees, which is typically a mix of department lead, principal, and teachers.
Okay, thank you. So then I, I think what I'm hearing from Courtney is, what she's saying is that she would like to see that when, after the summer, and you, and you decide on what direction you're going, that when you do look at the programs, that it's brought to the teachers so that they have, they have a little more input, not just, say, four teachers in a committee, maybe more teachers in the district have that type of input.
And I think...
Well, that is our, that is our typical problem. I mean, you've named our last 20 implementations, and maybe there's one that fits the description that you're talking about now.
I think I'm asking it because I typically am seeing the same names on committees. So I would, I would like to just branch into, like, I'd like to know what's Brooke has a sample for everyone to look at, everyone to feel, everyone to see. I'd like to know if AppSchwa has it. I would just like to know that everyone has the opportunity to see whatever it is that you're, that you're implementing. Because I think that, from what I've seen, the committees have the same names. And I, and I understand that, and I get that.
And the committees are made up of people who volunteer.
Absolutely. I just would like to know the real-life experienced teacher who has a moment on her lunch break to go into the teacher's room and check out, oh, this is going to be the supplement to the social studies because we have new standards. Check it out, it's going to AppSchwa next, you know, like, and programs do that. I mean, you can get a set of something to experience and see. I just think that that would be a benefit to our teachers.
I agree, I agree. And I just want to make sure that, you know, because a lot of people watching at home, I just want to make sure that the tone sounds as if we choose something and then tell them they have to do it. That's not the tone. That's not the tone that I've been a part of in West Milford.
I'm glad to hear that.
So just, the game plan is to get the budget approved tonight, and then May of June have, between May and June, have teachers approve for summer hours for X not to exceed this many hours to review different things. So some of our summer curriculum committees are paid. Curriculum committees, obviously, it sounds like we want to have more this year, not fewer. Is that what I'm hearing? Instead of this many, have this many.
I think different.
Even if it's the same number of hours, just a larger number of people. And that's something we could certainly work with over the summer. And that's kind of the plan. But step one, we either budget tonight, and then the committees over the summer. I think that's a good idea.
I think Debbie's next, is that right?
So when, when teachers sign up for the committees, I just want to know the process. Is it, and let's say you're looking for four teachers and you get eight. Are you, do you, how do you choose, seniority, specialty?
We don't typically get more than we need. We typically look for representation from all buildings. We try to look for representation of all grade levels. Sometimes, I mean, if you take a look at the size of West Milford, to get a representative from every building on every grade level, you're talking about a committee that's not going to be... you're talking about a committee that, that's not gonna be, you know, very effective when you're, when you're looking at a group that size. Uh, so we try to, um, you know, we, we try to look at, like I said, a cross-section of grade levels, a cross-section of schools, so that everyone is represented on both of those, uh, both of those criteria.
Ray, Ray goes next, and then you, Kate, okay?
So, um, for curriculum highlights, just so I, I know, the balanced literacy program, is that the Shelley Klein program?
Yes.
So we're gonna keep doing that next, next year, or that's, we're done with the five-year contract?
This should be the end, but we should have been.
Well, we didn't, um, that's something we'll discuss at the next Ed Committee. Cause, um, we didn't, um, with the current state of things.
Right.
We didn't finish the, the program the way we intended.
Because last year happened the way it happened.
Right, so year five turned into them supporting how to, how to do at-home units, digital readers and notebooks, that type of thing. So, um, we didn't finish year five the way that we had intended. So those are things that we're gonna, we're gonna discuss.
And then with math, and then we've got the three different programs. So it was interesting, I was looking, like, kindergarten, first grade, five through eight, they have one distinct program that they're working with, right? Which is ST Math or Star Math. Grade two and four, it looked like there were two different programs that they're working with. And then in grade three, you have three different programs they're working with. I, I'm trying to get it, wrap my head around, is that gonna work with multiple programs? Is that, is that okay? Like, will it confuse students?
Um, so right now, um, in grades two through eight, everyone takes Star Math.
Right.
And everyone in grades two through 11 take Linkit. So, um, Linkit is a, Linkit is the standards-based assessment that is in, uh, language, uh, English or language arts, and math. That's administered three times a year. Uh, STAR is a shorter assessment, and that's administered typically three to four times a year. Uh, that's, that's usually, that's a little bit more, um, you know, for, you know, like a teacher would take a group to do a guided reading group or a running record in, in, um, reading to assess where a student's at. That's kind of how we equate Star Math. It's a, you know, they don't necessarily have to usually at a particular time period. They could, you know, give a Star Math assessment when they think a student is, you know, jumping ahead or, or lacking in some skills. They can just give that, it's ongoing. Linkit assessments are, you know, a set, um, time period that we give three times a year. So it's not really, um, you know, I don't think it's very intrusive other than, you know, than the way it is now with the, with the testing that they do.
I think the confusion might be that you were thinking of them as programs. They're more just assessments.
Right.
And ST Math is just, as we know, a supplement. It's not an assessment, it's.
And that's really for K3, it's not.
Well, right now it's K2. So, uh, I put K3 just in case we wanna, um, take a look at that and, and talk to our third-grade teachers. And, you know, we're still getting the feedback. Uh, so far the feedback has been tremendous. Um, so I'm, I'm eager to get second-grade teachers and third-grade teachers talking together to see if it's something that we wanna move forward with.
What is Conker Math? Is that replacing Go Math?
No, Conker Math is a, uh, training program. That's the organization that provides staff development.
So next year's elementary students are gonna have Go Math?
Right now, everyone is gonna, right, we, we do not have a program replacement, K5.
Got it.
We're maintaining the current program. This works on math best practices, that you can use to enhance any program.
And that's what we're gonna be looking at? We're gonna be looking at that over the summer, the math?
What, you're looking at the program?
Yeah. Is that right?
No, not necessarily. We'll be looking, we'll be looking at it over the next year.
Oh, over the next year, okay. Kate, it's.
So if we're gonna have a new program for September, we probably wanna have that by January.
Right, okay.
Nine months earlier, this is what we're gonna do. Training dates are set up for President's Weekend, Monarch April, you know, all like that. So, we wouldn't be financing now that we would just be in the beginning of September. We're way past that deadline.
Right.
Kate, did you have?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first, um, is I heard tonight for the first time that there were two RIPS, I believe I heard you say, yeah? Can you talk about that, please?
So it is one, part is 1.6 art teacher, which I believe is elementary. And then we have one fifth choir music, which is also mostly elementary but multiple schools. So the art cut may be at the high school if they transfer somebody to the elementary school. But the person being RFP, they're both, uh, uh, first-year teachers. So we've had replacements this year hires or early year hires, uh, in art and music. The art cuts would be by attrition, retirement, is that okay?
So, my next question is a couple of things about, um, and thank you, Ray, for starting this question, about the Shelley Klein program. So was there a refund if we didn't get to finish what we were doing last year?
Well, they, they weren't, like I said, they, they did something different. They worked with our staff. They, they were, um, with us every, uh, every Wednesday. They were meeting virtually with our, uh, with, with our teachers. They were also preparing units for the, um, pandemic instruction.
Okay, uh, preparing units. And it, it's very rare that I remember a number on an agenda from months ago. Okay, so the fact that I remember $60,000 this year for the Shelley Klein program is huge to me. Whether that impresses you or not, I don't know. However, for five years, we've paid $60,000 a year for a program.
Not a program.
Not a program, best practices. That if we discussed tonight that we didn't wanna do next year, we could talk about possibly keeping a district-wide music teacher and a 1.6 art teacher.
What comes up every time that this number is brought up? That it's not funded through local tax levy.
Okay.
Which is why it's not part of this presentation in terms of that. Part, a portion of it is, but it's very small. 75% of that funding comes from our Title II funding, which is our federal grant, which is designated for staff development.
Right, the title money, if the title money can be extended.
Which is why here, I, I just said, in our budget proposal, it was reviewed of.
And I just wanted.
So what was in the budget, so local funds are dedicated towards Conker Math, which is a professional development, which is from our professional development budget of local funds.
Okay. So, quick math, then we pay $75,000 over five years out of our taxes, and the rest comes out of. My point is, I just feel like.
Up to. So we didn't spend that much money on them this year because they, they get approved for, for their per diem, and then they get approved for not to exceed this number.
Okay.
So this year we did not use as much as we, um, approved. So that money comes back to me and to our students and to our staff in our Title One, Title II grant for money that I'm able to carry over into the next year.
Okay.
Which is the process we are involved with now, is preparing for next year's grant application. That includes the money that we encumbered, but we didn't use to move forward.
Great. Um, totally crazy request, not, I mean, this is budget. If, when we can in the future then, on an agenda, using the Shelley Klein program for example, when I'm approving it, if it reads on the agenda, uh, 75% of that being this much paid out of, and this much paid out of grant too, that would be very helpful, you know, moving forward. Because that is something that I recall being an exorbitant amount of money for a supplemental, you know, one year. Um, and it all, I often think about that. So if it was worded differently then, you know, I could stomach it a little better, you know? So that would be good for the future, but I guess I'm just, um.
Kate, I think, I think the one thing you need to know is that that number should be in the budget, right, Barbara? The way it's broken down by the percentage, right? In the budget itself, our book.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you see in our budget book, there's salaries that are broken down, 40% comes from this or. So it should be in our budget book like that. I, I mean, I.
Isn't it coded in, in our agenda as well that it's a certain percentage coming from a certain one code versus, and then a certain percentage coming from a different code?
Yeah, the resolution where you normally approve something like that will explain that which line, which expenditure lines money is coming from.
There, there are a lot of, I'd like, there are a lot of things in the budget. When you look at it, it'll, it'll be in parentheses there that say title money, you know, underneath it.
Yeah, sometimes it does. It's in the budget book, sometimes you'll see a salary of probably teachers at high school, Macabre. This, this salary will be 60% here, 40% there. To find out what they're making, you'll really just have to add them together. So there's a lot of things like that in the budget book.
The, the title money doesn't show up in your budget. Just local money shows up in the budget books that you get.
Right.
The title money, because we really don't know what our entitlement is going to be until the spring sometime, because it's a triple down from the federal government. So we have to basically make, we have a, a rough idea, but we have to basically make do. So if we appropriate, if we put like $25,000 in local funds, we plan on using the other, the title money for the balance, whatever it might be.
Okay.
Courtney? Um, you mentioned that there was gonna possibly be a math consultant. Where's that money coming from? Is that title funds as well?
That is, um, part, it's partial, um, same as the, not the same, partially from our local budget and also Title II to supplement. It's more, it's more local than our, um, balanced literacy has ever been.
Because I think, um, you know, what Kate and Ray and, and I are, are kind of all on the same page together is, I think that teachers don't really want somebody telling them what to do. I think teachers want a program. They don't, they know what best practice is. I think that a program would be what teachers want. So I get that, you know, it's not.
Well, to put that in a different way, teachers know what their students need.
Exactly.
It's not just like they don't wanna be told what to do. They know what their kids in their classroom need. And that's given to them from someone else who doesn't know their kids.
Exactly, absolutely. But I think that, like, having a program, like, having a set, there is no set program, there's no set program for writing right now in West Milford. There's your best practice, practice Shelley Klein program, but that's not a program, that's a publishable program. That's what balanced literacy is, it's just best practice. I think having a program is what our teachers would want.
I'd be, I'd be happy to share our writing program at the next Ed Committee. And we've talked about this, if you wanna see, we do have a.
I'd love to see it.
We do have a writing program.
I'd like to see it.
We do have writing fundamentals. We started with the writing fundamentals units that were a purchase program, but we've been using our consultant to adapt them to the needs of our staff. And that's exactly what's been going on in these last five years.
So, I guess my question would be then, when the, when the Shelley, when Shelley Klein comes and does her trainings, they, they, they are targeting the individual buildings and the individual teachers for what their needs are?
Yes, yeah. The teachers, um, you know, the teachers ask questions, they, they have feedback, they, you know, have these elaborate discussions around the topics that they discuss that, uh, at that meeting.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ray.
Yes!
Can I just, try to wrap my head around?
It seems like we have a lot of consultants in a lot of different areas. Why are we hiring all of these consultants? That's, you know, I'm just trying to figure this out from a budget perspective. Why do we have all of the different consultants in all these different areas? I mean, a consultant basically tells somebody what to do. And I just have to believe people have more their ideas than your ideas? Sorry, I didn't turn that on.
It's okay. That would be a question for Dr. Anna Moller.
That's not a question we're gonna answer.
Maybe, maybe it's a discussion that has to come through education. Or even personal.
We can get that on the next Ed, we can get that on the next Ed, maybe.
So, I was, it's interesting, we talked about ST Math. Everyone wanted to know, you know, what are other districts doing?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, you know, what other districts are doing. When you take a look at some of the best-performing districts that are out there, you know, Terry referenced, uh, SAT scores. When you take a look at those top 100, you take a look at what these people are doing. Uh, I'm, I'm very involved in my county group, I've mentioned that many times. Um, so we talk, we communicate. We talk about the types of things that people are doing with their staff that has moved the needle. Um, so, you know, so I'm not, I'm not saying that in, in reference to one particular initiative that we have. Um, but that's, that's a lot of what we do. You know, the answers aren't always just here in West Milford. Sometimes you have to look beyond the walls of West Milford and see what successful districts are doing. So the use of a consultant like Conker Math, if you take a look at Conker Math and Nancy Schultz, uh, very well-renowned, uh, has tremendous, um, you know, success with the districts that, that they've worked with. Um, so we've talked about math quite a bit, uh, in this room with, with numerous boards. Um, so it's, it's a different approach. You could give anyone a program. If they don't know how to use the program, if they don't know how to best teach Algebra I, or if they don't know how to best teach students fractions with Cuisinier rods and all those types of things, they're not gonna get that out of a program. The program doesn't teach them how to use manipulators. The, the program doesn't teach them how to, um, focus on Bloom's Taxonomy. All of these things that are, you know, from the research field of, of education, they're not gonna get that by handing them a textbook and walking away. So that's my, something we'll talk about in, in education.
And just really, I mean, I just, again, that's something for me, like, thinking out loud. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. And, and I know that other school districts, like, they do the same thing. Again, just as I think about the dollars and, and how we spend them, you know, and we hire consultant after consultant, is there a way to streamline that, you know, in a more efficient way with our dollars? That, that's, right, that's how I'm kinda looking at it. Like, cause we're talking about budget. I'm not, I'm not even necessarily thinking from the education, I'm just thinking about the budget and what we're talking to the people in town about and, and how their dollars are being spent. Right, so I just wanna be good stewards of, of the township taxpayer money.
So Title, Title II, that a majority of these professional development initiatives and consultants are funded through, is specifically designated by the federal government for professional development activities. So that is what, um, that is what we are able to use for funding for a majority of it. Very little of the professional development that we've contracted with has come from, uh, come from local funds.
We probably do some of that, like, there's grant money and all kinds of shit. I, I understand, and maybe that's something for another day in another meeting to just kinda delve into so folks know we are doing what we need to do to make sure that we're spending, right, the taxpayer money wisely. And, like, we're not just kind of putting these things together. We're, we're not hiring six consultants in six different areas just because we feel like there is a method to that, so.
The only thing I just wanna take it back up, you know, we work closely with him, is that I don't want the public or the board to think that any consultants that also come in, that it's just like one stop, they come at an end, right? That the money's not well-spent. Cause I'm a taxpayer too, so is Mr. Novak. So we, what I can tell you is that even when a consultant comes in and maybe trains or provides information, I have always seen you have an extensive, or the supervisors have an extensive plan as to how that's gonna still carry out. And sometimes, and I hear you saying, well, it's always people from the outside, but also, and Mr. Novak and I are both, you know, experts in our field, as you say, both presidents of the county group, but sometimes the people here don't wanna hear from just us, right? They want and they ask for people from the outside to come in. So I think it is a discussion, that's more of an education-type discussion, with a balance as to what can we do within, but also who should be utilized from without. You know, and I think that that's something that, you're right. Um, I think you said it, Miss Anne, like, that that's probably like the future. It's something to continue with, you know?
When, when I sit here and I hear it too, it's like, you know, some of this is just words, okay? I, I will say, and I'm only using this as an example, when we talked about the ST Math, and in committee we had the chance to hear about ST Math from somebody who represents ST Math. ST Math, it gave, I think it gave a little more insight to the, the board members who were present, so that we understand what we're buying, what we're paying for. And I think that's really what you're saying. Like, if we could see, I think what they, see how they're handling the train, I understand about the professional development and the title money, because that money needs to be used exactly for what we're doing.
Right.
But it's important that as stewards of the tax dollars, everybody understands where that is going and why we're utilizing that.
Let me, you're right. I do want to say, um, the guy that came to committee, I, I do not think he gets paid by ST Math. So he wasn't representing ST Math, he uses ST Math in his district. He's a superintendent and a board member in another district. So I just wanted to say, like, it wasn't like he was paid to come to our committee meeting and talk to us, you know?
And he gave us a good, he was able to give us that, that side of it so that we understood it. And I appreciated that Mr. Novak did that and that Dr. Anamon, so that we could get a better understanding of the program. I, I mean, I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation that we will continue to have.
I think it's a good discussion to have about, you know, there has to be some, you know, how much is too much, how much is not enough, and who's leaving here. Those are all discussions we have to have.
I, I have one last thing just about the budget for me. So I'm all for programs, I'm all for consultants, I'm definitely for our best practices, and Dan, I am definitely going to be quoting you in the future. You need to look beyond West Milford and look at what successful districts do. Thank you. Yes, that is part of why I'm on this board, because that is exactly what we need to do. Data-driven, looking around, and be better than what we are. Status quo is not okay. I get that. With that, I have to say I'm upset tonight because I came in feeling really good, I didn't know we had refs, I know I missed the last committee meeting, was that discussed in committee last week?
They were, they were discussed, yes.
Yeah, so, um, I'm upset about the refs, and I want to be assured that that, that that is, that our students' education is no different next year than it was this year with losing to 1.6 staff members. Because, because my last sentence is this, programs are great, but people are better. And the more people that we can put into the lives of our students, whether they be counselors, social workers, teachers, people in our buildings that work with our students every day, people are better than programs. So I'm upset just about the refs, I know I asked what they were, I just wanted to hear a little more about them because I didn't know, and I'm sorry that I missed committee.
It's okay. We've had, uh, obviously no declining enrollment, so the cuts won't be felt as much as it would be felt if our enrollment was the same, or if it was increasing, you'd feel it more. But with the declining enrollment, we've had our graduating 12th grade be larger than our entering K every year for a number of years. And it may not be a lot different, but those, a reduction of 25 students, 20, you know, 25 students every year over time adds up to a significant amount of students. So with almost two and a half million dollar cut in state aid, I want to say it's the best we can do. It's not perfect, it's not ideal, because our teachers make the district, but it's just we're not getting any support from training. And, um, you know, I tell my colleagues, you know, how much we had cut, and, you know, they're floored, they think we're losing, you know, 30 people. And, you know, we kind of shaved it down in other areas, and our retirement here or there helped out, but, um, there's always going to be, you're going to feel the cuts because you're losing the people.
Yeah.
But I still know, we know alternatives to get our revenues to meet our expenses and have the balance, so.
And all programs are staying as is.
No, we're not losing any programs.
For music and art.
Obviously, we should have retirement from this point forward in certain areas, you can always bring somebody back, um, in, in those areas, so.
Thank you.
And I just want to say too, is that although our enrollment is, is lower in the high school, we're starting to see that little bit of bump in the element, you know, within the elementary's where maybe more and more people are moving in. So it's going, it's kind of like a cycle that we're going to be going through too. So we need to keep that in mind, because there may come a time where we have to add something, and having that cushion maybe is going to be a good thing, you know, because right now, we're not slammed with enrollment where we have big, large classes. I mean, there are districts that are cutting schools because of these cuts from the, the state. So, you know, I, I have to say thank you for, to Barbara and Alex and Liz and Dan for putting the work that they did into this budget. I mean, there's always stuff that we can tweak and, you know, everybody has something that they identify and say, I think we can get rid of that, you know, so. And I appreciate all the input from each board member, because this is a long process, the budget. And, you know, I, I think we're, I think we're at a good spot with the number, but of course it could always be better, you know, uh, according to different people, so. Any other questions? If not, I think we're going to move on to, Dan, you're on again.
So I just wanted to, uh, provide a little update, I know we've spoken a lot about changes we've had to Encore in grade K through five this year, and how, um, our support for a entirely virtual cohort forced us to shift some staff members and, and, you know, we have limited resources for, for Encore programs at this point. So it's, um, in our recent transition, in our return to school plan that began on March 29th, where we started to invite back, um, class, grade after grade for five-day in-person instruction, we had a significant number of students who chose to leave the virtual cohort and come to five days of in-person instruction. That gave us the ability to review staffing and to make some adjustments in our virtual cohort staff, and we were able to put Encore Support Services back in all six elementary schools. Um, so it's, uh, it was exciting development. I'm hearing from principals and parents quite a bit that they're grateful to have the opportunity. It started, um, full swing about, uh, pretty much, I think the day after we returned, so last Monday, the day after we got back from spring break, um, groups of students started to meet with their Encore teachers and, um, you know, begin that work that we, we have to do to take a look at what this year has meant and how we correct some of those things. Um, so that's one thing, which is not on the agenda, I just wanted to comment on, um, you know, I know our student representative isn't here, she probably would have mentioned the All District Arts Festival, which is Thursday night. With, with the, um, restrictions and the type of environment we're in, uh, we are inviting two, um, two guests per participant, so it's not an open event to the community as, as it's been in the past, just because of our, because of our restrictions. Uh, the governor lifted, um, the numbers of people who can attend an outdoor event, but that doesn't take place until May 10th. Um, so we are keeping it to two guests per participant. Um, but we got, Dr. Anamon and I walked and we saw the, um, for the first time in a long time, we got to see all six fifth grades come to the high school safely distanced, practice their instruments outdoor, and they, they played, we were like blown away by what they were able to produce in such a short amount of time. They haven't, they haven't had their instruments for quite, for, for a long time, and what we had heard them put together, um, to rehearse for Thursday night was, was pretty tremendous. So I, I just want to give a, um, you know, one reminder about the event for the participants. Two, I'm going to be sending a Honeywell tomorrow night that has a link, there's a QR code link for the K-12 Virtual Art Festival. So in the past, we've done our art and industrial arts festival, um, in person. It's all going to be, um, virtual, there's going to be a slideshow, it's broken out by, um, by grades and a, and a good representation of, of our K-12 students across the district. So I'm going to send that link out. Um, it'll go live, um, on Thursday night when our presentation for All District Arts begins. Uh, so I just wanted to, you know, make those, make those announcements.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Francisco, Special Reports and Correspondence?
I believe that you have some minutes to approve from the March 9th, uh, meeting, the preliminary budget and executive session, and the March 23rd meeting, uh, which was our workshop regular and exec session. So those are there for your...
I need a motion.
To approve the following four minutes, March 9th, preliminary budget, March 9th, executive session, March 23rd, workshop regular meeting, and March 23rd, executive session.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to abstain from March 23rd.
Okay. President's report. Um, I was just going to say, I, I'm so happy to be able to say that everyone is back in the schools. And I've run into a number of teachers, and they are so excited to have their students back in the classroom. Um, I, I have to say, I didn't know if we were ever going to get here, but I, I'm very happy to see, like, you see these kids out and they're, they're happy to be out and be, being in school again. And I have to say thank you to Dr. Anamon and, and Mr. Novak and Liz and Barbara for all the hard work, our transportation department, all of our staff, because we really are doing a good job here as far as getting everyone back. And I think, hopefully it will help with the mental health and make kids feel good and be able to, to leave their school at the end of the summer, in summer, and be able to enter their building and be happy again. And I really appreciate everything everyone's done, and it's nice to see. I rode past and I saw some kids out on the playground, and I thought, wow, this is really neat to see kids playing outside on the playground. So, and I was just going to touch upon the art festival too, for April 29th, I'm looking forward to seeing that, so I'm glad to hear about that. Okay. I'm going to take this down, because this takes a long. Public comment? This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing the resolutions on the agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Would anyone like to speak under public comment? Okay.
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions.
Just, if you could let us, tell, tell us your name, your address, and your name and address?
My name is Christopher Conemo, I'm, uh, West Milford resident, I'm on 842 Maccapin Road. I have a son in the kindergarten cohort at Afro School.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, like, like you said, uh, having the kids back at school full-time has definitely been, uh, I know it took a lot of hard work from everyone on the board, thank you for that. And, uh, you know, I think it is really good for, especially the younger kids. Uh, one of the things I think a lot of parents, me, I'm very, very disappointed with is the mask, um, the mask mandate with schools. I mean, we could go to a restaurant, sit down and eat, take your mask off, you know, I kind of think, why can't kids come into school, sit down at their desk and take their mask off? Um, you talk about mental health and things like that with kids, I think that's hurting them more than anything right now. You know, and I understand the state has mandates that are in place, and I think there's, there's certain things that we should be pushing back on right now. And, uh, when it comes to our kids' mental health, I think that's very important. Sorry, I didn't have time to prepare.
That's okay.
I was having some practice. But, uh, but yeah, I just, I want to stop by and just throw my two cents in on there. It's, uh, definitely been difficult as a parent to watch my kid walk into school every day with a mask on, and, and the frustration that he feels, and he's only five, and I know he's feeling frustrated for a moment, but, um, I'd like to see that come to an end soon.
No, I'm, hopefully that will happen.
So, yeah, I mean, I...
We have no control over that.
Yeah, is there anyone, I mean, I've reached out to people on the board, you know, in the past, and just kind of stopped getting responses from some people, but, um...
Well, we will, we will not respond to you. Uh, we're not allowed to really respond to individuals.
Yep, I understand.
If you send us an email or something, each board member usually forwards it on to Dr. Anamon, and then Dr. Anamon would take care of it.
Yep, understood.
So if you need to, you can always, you could always contact him.
Yep, I have reached out to Dr. Anamon before, I don't, but, uh, is there anyone else that I could reach out to, maybe above, above that, to, to get some kind of movement on this?
The governor.
Any direction, the governor?
Yeah, the governor.
The governor.
It's still a state mandate for masks.
Yeah, yeah.
There's talk of, uh, CDC released something today about masks outdoors. They're recommending it be done. My guess is the New Jersey Department of Health will follow suit shortly, but those are outdoors situations, not necessarily indoors. So we're in a wait and see with the state, but, uh, as soon as we know, we'll share that with the community.
I mean, indoors, I mean, like, like you said, it's the same thing, like a restaurant, you have a, a capacity that you could reach where people are indoors without masks on, as long as they're, you know, you're with your group at your table, you're socially distanced from other people. And I mean, as far as I know, I mean, I haven't been in the school yet, but as far as I know, the kids are all socially distanced at all times in the school, their desks are all six feet apart, right, or at least three. Um, you know, like I said, I can't understand why, when they're stationary at their desk, why they can't take their masks off.
Well, I, I think probably if you wanted to, you could write a letter to the governor or email, and...
Yep.
That might be where to start, or the Department of Health.
Health would be another one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Avenue, because our, our guidance document, which was updated a short while ago, was, is from, directly from the Department of Health.
Okay.
So my, my guess, and I guess from background, our estimate is that they will update that again.
Okay.
Especially now that CDC, so they update it as there are changes, but we take the guidance directly from Department of Health.
Department of Health.
If you reach out to that department or...
Yep.
Express your concerns or questions, I think that that would be best.
Okay. Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you for your time too, I know you're all working very hard, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Liz, is that, um, State County, like you go on the State County, um, website?
So we, we go, we, um, communicate as far as our contact tracing with the State County Department of Health, but really the, the, the New Jersey Department of Health is who puts out the guidance for the schools.
Gotcha.
And to be honest with you, I don't look at the contact with the, with the Department of Health.
Okay, anyone else?
If you don't mind if I ask another question, um, has, have the school nurses noticed any, has there been any, um, like cases of students coming to the, to the school's nurse not feeling well from wearing a mask or anything like that? Is any of that happening, or?
You know what, that, to be honest with you, I, I have to go back and kind of check on that particular question with our nurses. I know that they haven't brought that up in our weekly meetings as something has come up.
Okay.
But what we can do, and that's something that we can, now that you've expressed that your child, you know, just feels that the mask, that the mask is like frustrating in some ways, then what we do is we usually then would increase the mask rates for that child, or increase the mask rates in the class, so we can, so I could follow up on that.
Okay. Um, and is, is there any reports on like transmission rates within the school district, or?
So we constantly monitor that with the epidemiologist that works with us and the nurses at the State County Department of Health.
Okay.
Uh, what I, what I can tell you is that we have not had any identified outbreak with the Department of Health in our, in our schools.
Yeah, so that's kind of, kind of what I'm getting at too, is I kind of wanted, was hoping for support from, from people who are more than just, you know, one resident, um, to reach out and say like, you know, enough's enough already. Um, you know, like, I think a lot of us in here know that this isn't protecting pretty much anyone from anyone, but especially young kids, from, you know, I mean, any teacher who wants to be vaccinated could be vaccinated by now. Um, I don't think, even before the vaccine came out, kids weren't putting anyone else at risk, especially young kids. And, uh, I was just kind of looking for some support from, from other people who were, you know, maybe higher in the board that could also kind of push that.
We just follow the guidance that we, that we're like mandated to follow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I need a motion to close, um, public comment.
I'd like to close public comments.
Second? All those in favor?
We, uh, aye. There's someone listed, are they, they, did they sign up to this?
She, she did email and asked to be taken off.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I just have one, did we vote already?
Yes.
Okay. Just have one amendment to be...
I have to make a correction.
Okay. I have a little correction to the agenda. Page 11, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 18. At the top of page 11, there's a sample of names that are approved for subteachers... At the top of page 11, there's a sample of names that are approved for sub-teachers, sub-merchants. On the top of page 11, there's Kyle Klimic, that should be Kylie, K-Y-L-I-E. And on that same second name, there's a Nicholas Latron, so this is twice, so you could strike through one of the names.
Okay.
And, um, I realized that I neglected to include something on the budget resolution.
Okay.
So, um, in the, uh, where it says, uh, the, the total amount, fifty-eight million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fourteen, the next paragraph is going to say, be it further resolved that budget line seven, six, three, six, zero, include a three hundred thousand dollar deposit into capital reserve for the security.
I think we, just start that again.
Sure.
Can we tell us what page we're in?
You're on page four.
On the budget resolution.
On your page four.
After, after, after it says the total fifty-eight million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, one, five, fourteen.
Further resolved.
There's gonna be another paragraph that's gonna say, be it further resolved, that budget line seven, six, three, six, zero, include a three hundred thousand dollar deposit into capital reserve for the security vestibule renovation. So, that's gonna tie into the increase in the capital reserve withdrawal that is in the next paragraph. Okay? Does anyone have any questions about that? Basically a flow-through from this year's budget into next year's budget.
That was what you explained to us before.
You said that earlier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need, we need to also hand carry. We have a hand carry for personnel with four items on it that'll be going in there also for the, uh, motion. So, we, now we need a motion.
I need to make a motion to adopt these end of present, which are changes and, uh, hand carries.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to move on now to operations and finance. Um, Mike, would you wanna take that?
Sure. Do we have sound yet?
I think so.
Do we get sound?
Yeah, sound, I think it's back on.
All right, uh, make a motion to approve item number one on the agenda?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? This is the budget item. Okay. No discussion. All right, Barbara, roll call please.
Mr. Guarino?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstained.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Now you can move probably everything.
Move, uh, to approve items two through ten.
I need a second?
Jason.
Jason, okay. Uh, just as a, uh, note, Resolution Number Seven. Dr. Anamon, did you wanna comment on that? That's the one from.
Yeah, so Resolution Number Seven. Resolution Number Seven, as you know, we joined, uh, a consortium called SOS Support Our Schools. Uh, this is the group of districts like us that are being affected by the state aid cuts under S2. And we are all in unison approving this resolution to essentially oppose the, the state aid cuts. Uh, in light of the pandemic and just in general, we're gonna be losing approximately ten thousand dollars. That's just an estimate. It could be more, it could be less. Um, so we're gonna be approving, hopefully approving this tonight and setting it down to politicians in Trenton because there's no good reason to be cutting so many good, efficient school districts at all, let alone in the middle of a pandemic when the state government borrowed, I don't even know how many billions of dollars.
Four billion.
Four, four billion to get through the year and now they have more money than they know what to do with. So, they have, and we thought at the very least they would hold this year's cut one year in abeyance. Um, but they didn't. So, um, we'd like your support on that and we will be sharing this with the community as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On, um, motion number four, on Congress, I see that they're gonna pay management fee of sixty-two thousand dollars. What did we pay last year, do you remember?
Probably somewhere close to that. Their management fee really doesn't increase. Um, we originally approved next year's contract last month and then the Department of Agriculture came back and said that the administrative costs for fingerprinting and some of the other things that have to be accomplished before somebody could start, because don't forget now, the workers are mostly Pomptonian workers and not district employees any longer. So, all of that, um, couldn't be part of our operating expenses that we respond, we pay them, we reimburse them. It had to be part of their operating expenses, which gets included in the management fee.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, a roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Next one.
All right, uh, motion to approve item 11?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? If not, roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Abstained.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstained.
Next one.
Motion to approve items twelve through fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, if not, roll call? Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Stevenson, Personnel, Student Affairs, remember you have a hearing.
I need to make a motion to move items one through fifty-four and item forty, number one, item fifty-five through fifty-eight. I had to write it down.
Any discussion? There's numerous, Mr. Guarino?
I would just like to say, uh, congratulations to, uh, Phyllis on her, uh, retirement and, uh, maybe, uh, moving on to her, uh, next career as a meteorologist. So, Phyllis, as my friend, um, you know, we always like to talk weather, so, uh, congratulations and good luck in the future.
Any other discussion? If not, I, I also wanna say, you know, congratulations, retirement. We have, uh, Mary Pastnak and Laura Diamond, Laura Day. We also have Pam Sastre and Bruce Casparo. Um, I wish them well in their retirements. Any other discussion? Barbara, roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Abstained from thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-five, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained from thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, and fifty.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-seven?
Nope, thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-seven, forty-eight, and fifty.
Forty-eight and fifty, forty, forty-eight and fifty?
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes to everything else.
Okay.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstained from, you know, the thirty and thirty-one and, uh, yes to.
Yes, papers.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Okay, I abstained to thirty, thirty-one, thirty-four, and thirty-five. And yes to everything else.
Mrs. Dwyer? We were okay with that, right?
All right, move to approve items one through eight on education. Second.
Discussion? Not roll call?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo, policy?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move one through seventeen under policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if not, roll call?
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Committee reports, Parks and Rec, Mr. Stillman?
No.
Okay, safety, safety, um, there is no report for this month. I believe we have a meeting next month, May 12th. Superintendent's Roundtable?
We have a meeting on Thursday morning.
Okay. The State County School Boards?
No meeting in April, next meeting May 24th.
Oh, okay. New Jersey School Boards? I don't have anything due to.
I have nothing.
Legislative, Mr. Oferczynski's not here. Technology, Mr. Guarino?
Well, you saw that they're working on, uh, you know, upgrading the phone system finally. Uh, another thing that, uh, is, is coming because we all know that Honeywell is, uh, going away, uh, School Messenger, um, seems to be the, the choice as we move forward. They've had some very good success with that. And, uh, we're gonna move forward with that as we get through this year. I think there might be some test runs with that. Um, the audio system for the board meetings, I think that the folks at home will probably be, um, uh, excited to hear that, uh, we have, we think we've found a, a vendor thanks to, um, Robert, but especially Joey Jordan, who's helped us with, uh, finding, uh, the, the right, uh, type of equipment that we need to more effectively be able to communicate so people can hear what we say. Um, we will have mics that, uh, that will work properly. I think everybody will, will have mics. So, that's an exciting thing that, uh, hopefully will be coming, uh, sooner rather than later. And, uh, the Chromebook, hey, so the Chromebooks, there will be a process at the end of the year that we think will, will make it as simple as possible for people to turn their Chromebooks and know that people that may be doing some of the, uh, summer programs, I think it is right there, like some of those students may, uh, they'll end up keeping, uh, Chromebooks so they can use them over the summer. Is that right?
Yeah, DSY and, uh, Summer Reading Program.
Thank you.
Sounds good?
Yep.
Uh, Township, um, we haven't heard anything.
Nothing yet.
From anybody about in Munich, okay. Uh, West Milford Municipal Alliance? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think the, um, that, that joint committee, I, I think that, uh, hopefully we will have a meeting scheduled again sometime in May.
Yeah, yeah, I think there has been some conversation that you had spoken with the mayor, right?
So, so the goal is hopefully to, to restart some of those meetings and they really didn't have things to discuss. But now that we've got our budget free, we're trying to, the towns and the work groups, some of that, I think we can get back to having some of those meetings over the coming.
Okay, hopefully. Municipal Alliance, West Milford?
There was a meeting on Monday, April 12th. Um, uh, for discussion that evening is National Night Out on Tuesday, August 3rd. Uh, they created a subcommittee to organize and their first meeting was on people at the Harlem Jewish Success Center. Uh, there's a discussion on offering scholarships to graduating high school students who participated in the Heroes and Poor Kids Program. That's under a subcommittee as well. Um, Kathy, the, the head of the WMMA is very busy working on this federal grant, um, to get more programs and more events into, you know, more funding for WMMA. And Sunday, 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 May 23rd. If you have nothing going on in the morning, come on down to the West Milford Rec Center for this third annual Scott's Fun Run. I even registered by using these little doohickeys over here. So, if you can do it, you can do it too. So, Sunday, Sunday, Monday, be there. I'll be there. I hope to see you there.
Just to be clear, the doohickeys are QR codes, right? Is that what you're considering?
They could be the Z, 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 V, V code. I don't know. They're, whatever.
Thank you.
That's all they do now. They do, they said, you click the phone.
Do this.
But they did it. And I did destroy my phone.
Thank you. Old business. Anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, um, the high school senior prom, how's?
Is that going?
Senior prom is gonna be the first week in June. Um, dates on my office, I don't have it here. It's the first Thursday.
June 3rd.
The third. It's at the Valley Regency in Clifton and, uh, we're excited about it. So, I know Governor Murphy, effective May 10th, yesterday, just lifted the ban on dancing at banquet halls.
Oh, banquet halls.
So, if you're at a wedding or any kinda prom, you can dance. The ban on dancing in regular bars will remain, moves forward. It's gonna be like Footloose. Where you can't dance, you can't dance in certain places for certain reasons, but we're excited about the senior prom. I think the bid's going out this week or maybe last.
They already came in. I think, I think it ended this Fri, last Friday, I think was the last day for the bids.
We're excited for our class of 21 to have some sense of normalcy and, uh, this is on our agenda for SRT this week to speak to the, uh, different PDA presidents because we have end of the year activities at all the three different, all the three levels of school.
And, and we're still going for the drive-in for graduation?
Correct. So, we're gonna be at the Warwick Drive-In for high school graduation on June 15th. It'll be, uh, similar to last year, perhaps with a couple new wrinkles. We'll have to wait.
Some surprises, let's say. They need a surprise. Everybody needs something, like a surprise. Uh, the other thing with graduate, with, uh, graduation, I'm hoping that we have the parade route so that maybe we can get it out to the paper so that they can publish it. Cause I have people saying, where can we go? Because they loved it so much last year. Like they, they wanna be out there for the kids.
We'll have to get that out there. It was, we'll have a little bit more time to plan this year than last year, but, um, it does cover all or almost all the different neighborhoods in town on its way. It's a pretty circuitous route up to Warwick, so we go out of the way a little bit just so every neighborhood can come out to the street and, and give us a wave or a honk or whatever. So, uh, it's a fun night. We're looking forward to it. Fingers crossed for good weather.
Any other old business? I need, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Courtney?
I just wanna give a shout out to Westbrook, um, not only because my kids' pool, but because they did something that I think really brought the community together. They had a hybrid trippy tray over the weekend and it was amazing. We had people coming from all, um, schools. It really was so well done. Um, and I think it was just a highlight of the weekend for people to get out. Um, so kudos to them. Um, and also I wanted to give a shout out to the musical that's happening at Macapin on May 7th empty. Um, Macapin is doing some really awesome things that I don't think other, you know, schools or districts are doing. We talked about the district arts festival, which our district is doing prom. Um, but, you know, these are awesome things that I think we should just highlight, um, the musical, prom, you know, graduation, all that development stuff.
And May 24th is the high school.
It's the twenty, it's May 24th, 22nd, and 23rd, I think.
Twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third.
But it. But it's?
They're doing Into the Woods.
They're doing Into the Woods, yes. And it was good to hear today that the governor opened up the inside seating, so maybe it'll be a little bit better.
Right.
But it's probably going to be open to the parents.
Right. Which Macklin is doing, too. They're allowing two guests per person, which I think is, I mean, other school districts aren't doing anything. So, we're so lucky to have such people that are, such wonderful people that are leaders and taking their reins and making these great festivals and performances for our community and our kids.
Well, I have to say, they were working on the sets this weekend, and what I was told was, "This is normal." So, you know, we're all, there's little things that are bringing everybody back to normal, and everybody's getting excited. Kate?
So, I have a straight request, Linda. I think this is the request to you. I'm wondering if maybe in a future meeting in your president's report, I don't know, maybe it's not you, but I'm looking for an explanation, a purpose, a mission statement, something for each committee and liaison that we have. So, I think I've had a lot of questions that I just couldn't answer, like, so what is the safety committee? Who do they meet with? What do they do? I really don't know, because I'm not on that, you know? So, I think it would be cool to just hear, these committee reports are amazing, you know, even though this year we have had a lot of not reports, but still, what is the purpose to the board and to our schools for each one? Kind of just an update in the future?
I think they're in our bylaws. It states why.
Okay, so I could tell someone that they can look at the bylaws.
Well, I'm just saying, I think that they're in there. I'm pretty sure that it's broken, but I'm sure we could, we could do something to explain what each committee is. Maybe each person that's serving on the committee could explain what they do.
Okay.
Any other new business? If not, need a motion to close new business?
Motion to close new business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to the members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operations of the West Milford School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute